Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, July the 12th, 2022. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located in the traditional territories of the Cree, Abogon, and Bieberhus First Nations people and other indigenous people, whose presence continues to enrich our virtual or vibrant community today. We recognize and offer our gratitude for their care and teachings about the earth and the culture. We honor their teachings through our interactions today and every day hereafter. We thank them for sharing this land with us. We commit to ongoing learnings about how cultural identity is celebrated, represented and honored, as well as the inclusion of the indigenous perspectives through action. Makovich, thank you. Meeting called in order. We'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the amended agenda.
Moved by Councilor Patrick Adams, seconded by Councilor Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held July 12th, 2022 be approved as amended as follows.
All in favor?
One, remove item 6.2, 2021-2022 Winter Operations Report and updated winter maintenance manual. Replace the attachment in item 6.6, user fee's bylaw update. And three, add item 8.2, bylaw 2255, being a bylaw to regulate semi-boots.
All in favor? Motion carried. In declaration of pecuniary interest, none noted. Petitions and delegations, none noted. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Moved by Councilor Stacy White, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held June 21st, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Councilor Lad Chaba, seconded by Councilor Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that council receive the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Committee held May 12th, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Item 6.1, down through your worship, to members of council.
I attended the Association of Municipal Managers' Quotient Treasurers Ontario Conference from June 12th to 15th. This is a well-attended event, given this is the first in-person one since the onset of COVID. Consequently, there was a lot, there were lots of sessions with a wide variety of topics. The keynote speaker was Dr. Dave Williams, an emergency room specialist, former hospital C E O, aquanaut, also an astronaut, and the only non-American to hold the entrepreneurship at NASA. He discussed his experiences leading organizations where uncontrolled risks have significant consequences. In his presentation, he addressed the importance of risk management, leadership, resilience, team building, and teamwork, motivation, health and wellbeing. He described that NASA recovered from tragedy, adversity, and how it developed a culture of competency that continues to attract the brightest and best. He stressed that municipalities must also develop a culture that keeps and attracts qualified people. Many of the workshops were technical in nature. For example, I attended a session on committees. The main point taken away from this workshop was that municipalities should only have committees that are required by legislation. Consequently, our clerk will be bringing a report to council in the near future regarding our subcommittees. We have an operation under terms of reference. At many recent conferences, I have been attending the recessions on the workplace, most notably the impact of COVID. The workplace has changed and the importance of retaining workers has increased. One session stressed that the pandemic has produced drastic changes for governments at all levels. One of those changes is how public servants work, and that new and innovative models of work have emerged by necessity and may very well continue long after the pandemic is over. Each of these models has differing effects on how the public service work, collaborate with their teams, create policy, and interact with the public. Work environments are changing with local governments, including the benefits and challenges of various new working arrangements such as remote or distributed work and compressed work week schedules. Zora Township in Ontario was used as an example of a four-day work week, with the York region also not considering such an arrangement. The change in nature of work in local government also speaks to how municipality retains and attracts employees. This is an area that I will be taking a much closer look at for Kirkland Lake. Overall, the conference was very informative and also a good opportunity to network. Answer any questions we have.
Councilor Owen?
Yes.
Through your worship, Tom.
On these four-day work weeks, are they working 12-hour days?
From my understanding, it is about eight and three-quarter days. And the stagger the workforce, so you have some taking Friday off, some taking Monday off.
So they end up working less hours than if they worked a five-day week?
No, they still work to 35 hours.
Okay.
Basically, just saying.
Same?
Yeah. And, but this has been a topic amongst CEOs I've been talking to. You know, and the need to really change the workplace is the reality that we look a little bit of.
Well, and the other thing is too, that would allow us to get longer service hours in certain departments. So when people get off work at the end of the day, they don't come to pay their taxes and the door is locked. Or pay the water bill, or go to apply for a building permit and the door is locked. Because that's, that can be very frustrating. Thank you.
Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, one of the dilemmas that we face is really how to, within the four-day work week, how to structure professional development activities, especially the ones that are out of town. For my part, also like professional development activities are, that sounds, but I take it that you do have some too, that people have to travel out there. So how would that really affect the structure of the four-day work week? How do you see that affect the day? Was people were taking the day that is supposed to be off to attend a professional development, or is it in that four-day work week? Because if someone is going for the professional development, within the four-day work week, that they're spending one day. So that's down to three-day work. That's.
Yeah.
I know you're not there yet.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, these are just one of many issues we haven't looked at. I mean, this takes, it's going to take a lot of investigation to see if this even work appropriately. You know, so, but that's just one alternative of a few that we could look at, you know, to really heighten our workplace as one where employees want to stay and also want to come here. You know, and various municipalities are offering or looking at these type of incentives to keep their employees. Because retaining workforces is very, is more difficult, challenging these days. We have to be innovative to be competitive.
Councilor White?
Yeah, my biggest concern with this, though I agree with it, it's something that has been ongoing with other sectors for a while. Is the buy-in of the shareholders. Not only staff, but members of the public and our contractors as well may be an issue. And there will be definitely some lead-up to any transition future council and administration decides to make.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owen, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that verbal report entitled 2022 AMCTO conference update be received for information.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.3, roadway snow depositing bylaw update. Jim Rowland, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, worship, for you to counsel. I originally planned on dealing with all of the winter maintenance issues tonight. However, on review, there's still some work to be done with the winter takes its time itself. But one thing that can be addressed tonight is the actual snow depositing bylaw itself. This is in place so that the town can deal with issues regarding placement of snow on roadway sidewalks. So on sudden, municipal property. The original, or the existing snow bylaw was passed in 2008. But staff are finding that at times it is easily challenged by public. And so it was decided rewrite was necessary in order to to make it very clear as to where snow can and can't be placed on roadways. As well, there was language added to the bylaw now, which will allow for cost recovery, where the town can go and perform remedial action and then charge it back to the homeowner and ultimately the tax law. Fines that are associated with this bylaw are also, are being raised from the existing fines. Right, rider fines were $100 for placing snow where it shouldn't be. Those have been beefed up to $75. Where with placing snow on a fire, I think, you had $200. If there's any questions regarding the bylaw.
Councilor White?
Jim, just to clarify, who would be designated to deal with issues when they arise? I know it's in the report, but for those people that don't read the report, could you just let us know who would be able to handle those reports?
Well, it is our bylaw enforcement officer. We'll enforce the bylaw. Certainly, there are times where the roads supervisors, as well as the manager and myself, could get involved on the side. If there isn't sure how it's to be addressed, but the fines and the tickets will be handled by law enforcement.
Thank you.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah, last one, it was a big problem. In terms of people putting snow on roads. I counted 10 truckloads being taken away from one house and I didn't even see all the loads. So we got some good bylaws. But it seems we don't enforce them. Right now, my neighbor's grass is high. Around the corner, they have grass that high. What? How is this going to be enforced? Does this have to be a complaint? Because it shouldn't be, it's a safety issue. The bylaw officers are driving around. Your two roads foremen are out driving around doing road conditions, so they must see it. So can't they tell the bylaw officer? Because there's no point rewriting a bylaw if we're not going to enforce it. Like, it's got to be enforced in the story. And it shouldn't be strictly through a neighbor complaining. At least in my opinion, I don't think it should be.
And the roads supervisors do conduct, they do the patrols. And they do work closely with the bylaw enforcement officer, so.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply they weren't, Jim. I just, I wanted to say in public that this is going to be enforced, and it doesn't have to be by complaint. That the bylaw officer drives around in her vehicle, and she can issue the tickets. And that the roads foremen drive around their vehicles doing road reports, and they can ask the bylaw officer to go to certain locations to see if there's a legal problem. That's all I want on record, that it doesn't have to be by complaint.
Any further comments?
Can we make some clarification? Can we make some clarification? So through you, worship, to Councilor Owen. Just to clarify in terms of enforcement matters, our systems are entirely complaint-driven. Under the municipal act, there are quasi-judicial rationales why we are complaint-driven. In terms of the patrol that the staff do, as I understand, they would identify it to the bylaw enforcement officer. And just another note that the fines that are proposed in the updated bylaw are subject to the regional senior justice approval in accordance with the provincial offenses act.
So you're telling me, if there's a problem on my street, I have to phone in on my neighbor? Is that what you're telling me? That you want me to start a fight with my neighbor because the street's unsafe? Can't the bylaw officer just issue a ticket when she drives flat?
Councilor Owens? I don't think we need to kill the messenger on this one.
No, no, I'm doing.
I'm finding you're talking aggressively.
Okay.
So as I'm sticking up for staff right now, they're the messenger. Let's not assault them, there are rules they have to follow. So just to clarify that, if I'm outlying, I apologize, but I think that has to be said. So this means, so I'm driving, I see a problem, I can put a complaint, and a ticket will be issued? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is different from last year where I know several people, I included call on neighbors. You know what, if I can't get out of my driveway, this is me, that's me. I'll call and complain, nothing's changed, so this will change this year?
Through you, worship, that there, we do have a complaint process. And you are welcome to, anybody in town is welcome to, is encouraged to use the complaint process.
Thank you.
Councilor Owen?
Well, we did have a complaint system last year, right? The same system, right?
Through your worship.
Because I went through it.
Okay. I can't speak to your worship through, I can't speak to what system you had in place in the previous year as it wasn't at the town of Kirkland Lake. However, I can provide you with the information that we do have a complaint system presently, that we encourage the members of public and anybody in terms of, that are getting services or otherwise in the town of Kirkland Lake to use.
I think generally speaking, Rick, that complaint service does work in most cases. There are times there's an extra follow-up required. The only complaint I have about it is they don't always get back to the person that did the complaining to let them know what's happened. There, Councilor Shaba?
Thank you very much. Snow can end up on the road in many ways. And I've seen in many cases too, why, where a neighbor would essentially plow from one side of the road to another one. Right, and try to cover these tracks. So in that particular case, I mean, yeah, I'm all for this, no problem. We should go after that property owner. But then there are other ways whereby, especially if you look back to the winter we had last year, whereby snow everywhere, people just can't avoid it. You have a very small driveway, there's nowhere for the snow, can't put it back in your living room. So it just has to spill over to the roadway. And I think, to me, that's not really intentional, that's just that there's nowhere for the snow to go up to the town, you know, clear the snow off the road. I don't think, to me, the property owner should be penalized for that. Because that, to me, is not really, it's not unavoidable. So I'm hoping that the leniency respected the two, where people, I don't put that intention, I just put it back on the road. Yeah, of course. The other issue that I have with this is that, you know, if people get a speeding ticket, you have a way of contesting. Okay, you let you win or you lose, that's an understory. So when that ticket is issued, so if people want to contest it, where would they go? Is there a mechanism to challenge that decision? I don't know, maybe there's not. If there's not, I don't think it's really fair to anyone that may be accused of that, that actually will have the benefit to fight it. Thank you.
Possibly some discretion could be used by the bylaw enforcement officer giving a warning for the first time. That's what happens the second time, then you're getting the ticket.
There's always judgment exercised, like, not every complaint from the public is going to result in a ticket being issued. You know, everybody has a different way of looking at things. I can't say that every complaint from the public will be addressed. We do not yet act to every complaint, but we do address each other's complaints. Now, whether it ends up in a ticket being issued or not, that's, that's what's investigated.
So some discretion is used?
Yes.
Yeah. Great, well, okay. Just a comment on what Lad said. I have some neighbors that pay to enter the move. And I have other neighbors who put the snow on the road. So how's that fair to people obeying the law? To say, well, let's use discretion because we have a lot of snow. We live in Northern Ontario, we get a lot of snow. And you know that when you buy your house.
Point of order. Could we please have the recommendation reread so that we're ensuring our conversation is directed to the decisions that need to be made at this table today? Versus, I've heard a lot of other issues being brought forth, but we should be focusing on the recommendation, I believe.
Worship, can you read the recommendation?
Yes.
Be it resolved that report number 2022 PW009 entitled roadway snow depositing bylaw update be received. And finally, that council hereby approve the updates to the roadway snow depositing bylaw and direct that the proposed bylaw as presented be brought forward for three readings of the August 16th, 2022. Worship, if I can provide through you to your Councilor Lad Chaba to advise that the mechanism in which a person can make an appeal on a ticket is through the provincial offenses. Okay.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I have to read the move during the second. Did you want me to read the entire recommendation again?
Done.
Okay. Moved by Councilor Patrick Adams, seconded by Councilor Casey Owen. Be it resolved that report number 2022 PW009 entitled roadway snow depositing bylaw update be received. And finally, that council hereby approve the updates to the roadway snow depositing bylaw and direct that the proposed bylaw as presented be brought forward for three readings of the August 16th, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.4, building bylaw updates, Luke Williams, Chief Building Officer. Welcome, Luke.
Thank you, worship. Through you to counsel, I would like to present the report for an update to the building bylaw. The building bylaw was last updated in 2016. And since then, a number of regulatory changes have taken place at provincial level, which are not currently reflected in our building bylaw. An example of this is that sheds are now permitted to be built up to 15 square meters in area without requiring permits. The previous size was 10 square meters. The building bylaw also requires housekeeping updates to promote consistency across bylaws, such as incorporating the recent updates to the property standards bylaw and the pool bylaw. I'll turn it over to council for questions.
Comments or concerns about the building bylaw changes? None noted? Oh, Councilor White?
Through you. I just have a question for the sheds. They're now increased in square meters. Was there a reason behind that? Or just, it just came down from the province and you're like, okay?
Through your worship to Councilor White, I'm not sure the exact reasoning of the provincial government. I know it was a pledge to the preacher, and it did get through in April.
Motion?
Moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that report number 2022 DEV 32 entitled building bylaw updates be received. And finally, that council hereby approve the updates to the building bylaw and direct that the proposed bylaw as presented be brought forward for three readings of the August 16th, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.5, parking bylaw update. Luke?
Through your worship to council, I would like to present the report for an amendment to the parking bylaw. This amendment is to specifically address construction bins placed on roadways. The current process for legally placing a construction bin on the road allowance is to apply to the town for a road occupancy permit. However, due to the time involved with processing a permanent application and the reality that a large number of construction bins are set on roadways to deal with emergency situations like flooded basements, we are having an issue with non-compliance regarding permits. The proposed solution is to stipulate through this amendment a strict set of criteria under which construction bins will be exempt from obtaining road occupancy permits. Construction bins would be required to display ownership information of the company, as well as contact information. The construction bins will also be required to have their corners marked with reflective materials so as to remain visible to drivers when placed on roadway. As compared to vehicles, construction bins do not have reflective markings on their corner. Vehicles have headlights and taillights that remain reflective when the vehicle is parked. Currently, there's no requirement for construction bins to have reflective elements when in the town placed on roadways. As black construction bins are particularly hard to see during early mornings and late at night, this proposed amendment is meant to improve safety to the residents of the town when on the road.
Comments?
Councilor, I don't know. Yeah, just a question. Has anybody ever had construction in Kirkland Lake?
Through your worship, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. It's curious.
Councilor Owens? In the financial consideration, you say that the town's going to pay for this reflectively? Is there a reason why?
Through your worship, mandate promote compliance. My understanding is there's three companies in town supply bins. Does it mean to accelerate the process of having the bins meet bylaw, or is it was to supply the tape?
Is this standing? Yeah. In my mind, like, I mean, the company owns the bins, you want to put them on, but you don't even have to put them on the street anymore. Shouldn't be up to the owner of the bin to comply and make sure his bin is, like, I mean, you buy a vehicle, you need to make sure that you're compliant, you have to put a license plate and insurance on it. It should be the same thing with a garbage bin. If you want to park it on the street, you should be able to, I'm missing totally off on this one, but. But my thought on that should be up to the owner to pick where.
Your thoughts on that, Luke?
Through your worship to council, it's certainly an option to have the companies strike that portion of the bylaw. I mean, your work, how the companies pay for it directly?
I don't think it's a major cost for them to do it. And once it's, once it's done, it's permanent. I would recommend that we go that route. Okay. Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, I read this, and I've seen it in some municipalities whereby the 1211 bin, that is, at a trial, we should try to park one bin at a time before they're picking up as it is. So that was the only thing, you have to clearly anybody, prevent anybody from having a row of, 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 especially in the construction.
Through your worship to Councilor Shaba, there's no requirement during a number of bins, but the location of bins remains, so the limitation would be how much road there is on the street.
All right. Any other comments? Sorry? Motion?
Moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that report number 2022 DEV 31 entitled parking bylaw updates be received. And finally, that council hereby approve the updates to the parking bylaw and direct that the proposed bylaw as presented be brought forward for three readings of the August 16th, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.6, user fee bylaw update. Jim Munter?
Thank you, through you, worship, to the members of council. To summarize this. To summarize this report, administration have identified revisions based on approved policy decisions and services that have recognized demands or have been tailored to suit programming. At a high level, there are various proposals before you to the town's user fees bylaw schedule. There are as follows. Addition of a 30-minute drop-in rate for fitness classes, addition of youth ball rate, addition of electricity rate for vendors at the market on a per-week basis, addition of locker rental premium at the new pool, addition of a fee for municipal information form processing, and changes to the building fees model as so directed by council's previous meeting. There are also general housekeeping minor typographical errors, and the schedule's format has been enhanced for ease of reference. Certain fees are proposed below the norms of local and similar-sized municipality in keeping with council's direct direction in enhancing local investment in personal-led business community. In keeping with the town's updated notice bylaw, public meeting is scheduled to take place on Tuesday, July 26th at 4:40 to allow council to hear from the public on the proposed amendments. Any member of the public wishing to speak or present at the public meeting are asked to register in writing with the municipal board up to and including noon of the day of the public meeting. It should also be noted that any subsequent or additions or increases to the user fees will be presented as part of the 2023 operating budget. And this is my presentation, Worship. I have various members of administration here this evening that are available to answer questions on their respective changes, so that should council so wish to request.
Questions or concerns? Counselor White?
I just have a point of clarification under the fire user fees. So it doesn't have to be necessarily answered this evening, I guess. The answer could come back the next meeting. As far as inspections to buildings, it's not specified whether it is an initial inspection or if it's the yearly required for safety plans, et cetera, if that fee is triggered for those yearly ones.
Worship, through you to Counselor White. The fire user fees were not amended in this update. However, I'm more than happy to get your clarification and will provide all the council with the answer to that upon, at the conclusion of the meeting.
Thank you.
But it will not come to the August, or the July 26th meeting as it was in part of the updates.
Perfect.
Any other comments? Not noted. We have a motion.
Moved by Counselor Lad Chapa, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. Being resolved, that report number 2022 CLK16 entitled user fee bylaw update be received? And that council authorizes the municipal board to amend the user fees charged by the various town departments as outlined in the report. And that a public meeting be held on Tuesday, July 26th, 2022. And finally, that the bylaw as presented be brought forward for three readings at the August 16th meeting attempt.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.7 2022 Asset Management Plan Update, Phase 2. Mick Brocker, pressure.
Thank you, Worship. Through your counsel. General, I'm not sure. Is Jordan going first?
Through your worship.
Whatever.
Scott, it's your decision. I have him up on the screen.
Okay, so we'll give Jordan a chance to summarize the findings and then we'll come back to this short report and have questions at that point. Perfect. Go ahead, Jordan.
Thank you. Just going to share my screen.
Hold on one second. I might have to allow you to share your screen. Okay. Be able to now.
Perfect. Okay, thanks everyone for giving me the opportunity to present the 2022 Asset Management Plan. It takes data from year 2021, so that's the title of the report. I'm Jordan Gonda, Senior Asset Management Consultant with PSD. Just before I get into the plan, part of the motivation for this work was complying with the Ontario Regulation 58817. This regulation essentially requires municipalities in Ontario to develop a series of asset management-related documents. I'm showing here the timeline from 2019 to 2025 of the various requirements. The work we did today and what I'm presenting today focuses on the 2022, where you see that green arrow. So the town has already completed an asset management policy. And we're at now with regulations that in 2022, we're required to develop a plan for core assets. These mean the roads, bridges and culverts, water, wastewater, stormwater. And I'm showing here in the bottom left some of the requirements. The focus of this report is about the current levels of service. So what, what kind of service are we currently delivering to all residents? Not necessarily what's the best or what we propose to deliver, but what we're currently doing. And along with it, what kind of inventory do we have? And what are we doing to provide this service? When we get to 2024, we require a similar kind of plan for all assets. So in another two years, the plan including facilities, vehicles, land improvements, equipment, everything else you own that's a tangible capital asset. And then by 2025, that's the end of this regulation. At that point, we are required to identify a proposed level of service. So what, what kind of service do we want to deliver? You know, what kind of condition is appropriate? What kind of rates are appropriate? What kind of risks are appropriate? So today, we're just going to talk about what currently we're delivering. I just want to highlight that this work is not purely for regulatory purposes. It's part of a broader goal of understanding what kind of services you're providing and providing a better way to do that. So the town owns a variety of assets. We say assets that relates to your infrastructure. So roads and bridges, you know, allows people to move, to get to work. Water mains provides people drinking water. Parks and arenas enhance quality of life. Vehicles and equipment support different services like snow removal, emergency services, fire protection. So at the end of the day, everything we own serves some kind of purpose. And asset management is the practice of understanding these services and being able to manage and maintain assets in a way that, that can deliver a good kind of service. So we talk about a good kind of service. What does that mean? It really is about balancing three different things. We have the cost, performance and risk. Cost, what's the cost to the taxpayer, the rate payer? What's the cost to the town to replace something, to operate on something? Performance, that can be the condition. That can relate to how soon to respond to an event, overall satisfaction. And risks relate to the kinds of risks such as infrastructure failure, regulatory non-compliance, health and safety. So you can imagine we have all these different kinds of trade-offs. Do we want to develop another bridge to connect a rural area? Do we want to take on that cost to improve performance, to allow more connectivity? Or is that something we don't want to do? Do we want to improve our operations? For example, do we want to put more resources into winter maintenance to reduce risks, to reduce outed, to reduce complaints? What are we willing to take on that cost? These are tough decisions. Asset management is a way that we can objectively look at these different kinds of trade-offs. And this plan I developed is, is a way, is kind of a foundation to this. We take information so we can make these kinds of decisions. I'm showing here the costs of your infrastructure portfolio. So the town owns about $350 million worth of assets. If we break that down per household, each household owns about $80,000. So that's quite significant. What that means is that if we poorly manage our infrastructure, that could have significant tax and rate implications because it's a lot of, of infrastructure per person. However, this 80,000 is pretty typical for the province. It's by no means high or low. It's just pretty close to the average. I'm showing here in the top right where that, those costs come from. So when you say 350 million, it's a mix of inflating historical costs, what things cost when you bought them and using inflation index. And some of the assets, like the road network, the bridges, the linear water networks, we used unit rates. So it's kind of a mix of different costing. Secondly, if we look at performance, this is best characterized by condition as assets deteriorate, they provide a poorer service. If we look across the whole portfolio, we could see just a little over half of the assets are in fair to very good condition. This is slightly lower than I typically see, but it's, it's, it's by, it's about, it's a reasonable kind of value. What we see here is that the roads are, you know, 72% is very poor. I just want to touch on that. A lot of this information comes from age. Ideally, we'd want to use assessments, so going out, looking at the road physically, looking at what the defects are. If we just use age, that, that tends to give us a poorer representation of condition. So the condition of the roads would likely be different if we had, you know, a good assessment. But just based on age, 72% is very poor. Across the whole portfolio, we're pretty much just using age, the exception being the bridges. So for the bridges, we used a bridge inspection report that uses industry best practice for, you know, condition assessment. So, you know, the bridge, you know, the bridges, see at the bottom, that's a fairly good representation. But there's definitely some work in the future to look at refining the condition scores. But based on, on what we've done, you know, about half is in that fair to very good condition. Based on the cost and the condition and renewal needs, in our plan, we forecast out what those needs are long-term. So I'm showing here 80 years worth of projections, so the next 80 years. Over the long term, we can be expected to spend 7.2 million per year on average. Again, some years we'll spend quite a bit less, some years we'll spend more. And depending on how we prioritize work and what contractors we use, we may shift around work. But based on need, you can expect about $7.2 million worth of needs each year to cover the renewals and replacements. So we can see the purple here is the sanitary sewer network. That has quite a large share. So, you know, that's coming up in the next 10 years. And then again, you see it kind of cycling through. Similarly, with the water network around 2040. So in our plan, we go in a little more detail at a category level to demonstrate what these needs are long-term. This 7.2 million for the roads specifically, that comes from a detailed model. So we were able to work with staff, understand what kind of activities they do. I'm not going to get into detail what all this means is outlined in the report. But the takeaway being that we can understand specific activities like crack ceiling, mill and pave reconstruction. We can identify their impacts, their costs, their timing. And that's what's used to inform the cost for the roads. All other assets we looked at, replacement at end of life. So how will we cover this? The infrastructure deficit is, is a North American phenomenon. And across Ontario, we see quite huge deficits. Typically, I see most municipalities about 30% funded. So that's, you know, less than half the money is in place is what's needed. For the situation of the town, based on our analysis, we found of 7.2 million is needed each year. But we only have about 2.5 million available. So that leaves quite a big deficit. But that, that deficit again is about on par with the province of being 30% funded. So again, this is really a situation across the whole province. By no means is the town of Kirkland Lake doing, you know, significantly worse than anyone else. You're about kind of on par with, with what I've seen across the province. So we can look at, at different options to close this deficit. An obvious way we could do that is by looking at the taxes and rates. So we looked at different kinds of funding horizons for sustainable sources. So we didn't consider one-time grants. What we considered were, you know, your taxes, rates, OSIF, anything that you're, you're getting year over year. We're assuming that you're not going to take on any new debt. And we're also not including operating requirements or growth. So in future iterations, the plan is something you might want to look at. But for this analysis, we did not consider operations or growth. And what we found is that for the tax-funded infrastructure, again, that's the, the roads, bridges, stormwater. If we want to close a deficit five years, that's about 1.2% tax increase each year. And the handouts you got today, I think there's a typo. It might have said 2.2. I revised that. It is actually 1.2. So that's what you need each year, year over year. So every year, that five years, we're increasing by 1.2%. If we look at the water and wastewater, we might want to close it over 15 years at 1.7% and 20 years at 3.5%. So the deficit for the rate-funded infrastructure is quite a bit higher. So that's why we suggest a longer funding rise. So that pretty much covers the, the scope of the plan. So as I said, it presents your portfolio of infrastructure, what you're doing to maintain it, renew it, what it costs. And then we give some recommendations of how you might fund that work. Before I finish, I want to give a few recommendations. Number one, I suggest that you have a condition assessment program together. So that will change, you know, the condition scores across the assets. And if condition changes, the needs change. So I suggest a condition assessment program. I suggest reviewing costing information, using more unit costs where available. Continue to operationalize the findings here. So when we provide projections for needs, this might help inform how you put together your budgets or what kind of decisions you make about acquiring new infrastructure. Number four, track the current and proposed levels of service. So as I said, by 2025, we want to have a proposed level of service. I suggest in the next few years, you think about how you might want to do this. One possible way is a public engagement survey. But however you do it, you need to come to some kind of target level of service. Lastly, continuous improvement, regular review of the plan. It's not something that sits on the shelf to collect dust, but it should be something that you, you continuously update a year over year as you get new information. So that concludes my presentation. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
That 1.2% increase in the tax levy really it's not going to cover the full deficit. It will, it'll, it'll catch up for the $7 million deficit, but that's one year. At least the way I'm reading it, 1.2 compounded over a five-year period. It's still going to leave us a shortfall along the way. Is that a fair comment? I mean, 1.2 is a good start because we've, we've been fighting for eight years at least to put money away in reserve for infrastructure. And basically up until last year, this last past year, we haven't got a hell of a lot. We do have a few million now. But in order to catch up, I don't think the 1.2 will realistically, it'll put us ahead. Maybe $130,000 a year compounded, maybe 160 and 170 in the fifth year. That's just my opinion. I'm not. That's just my opinion, I'm not.
Through your worship to council, kind of made me feel that a little bit.
Okay.
You're a hundred percent right. It doesn't add up to the the deficit. Now, the tax part of this is really focused on the tax-funded assets, so roads essentially for our purposes. Doesn't get there, but we, you know, historically, we had other funding sources as well. And and this is kind of a, you know, it's it's a best guess to try and get to that point where we can start funding, you know, a proper asset management type of approach to our to our community. So it it doesn't plug the gap dollar for dollar, what you're seeing in these tables and in the reports. But it's meant to be part of the mix to plug that gap, and it's kind of the best estimate at this point in time. You know, it's it's kind of gives you some tools and some ability to maybe start some decision-making on how we're going to go about that. I think you could say safely about all of this, there's a tremendous amount of estimating and back and forth with numbers and, you know, I'm an accountant. And I can tell you, I'm looking at it kind of go, wow, you know, there's there's just a tremendous amount of variables, I guess, in these numbers. And and so it makes it kind of difficult to say, yeah, this is your answer. But we're doing our best to kind of get to that point where we've given you some some options and some thinking to kind of get there. You know, the as Jordan pointed out, the report heavily emphasizes that, you know, water and wastewater is where we have our biggest problems by far. And and that's where you see the big rating increases that you're seeing there. And and I do want to kind of emphasize that, you know, we built into that model OSIF and gas tax funding by nothing else. And typically in the past, we've been able to access other funding to help us out. So, you know, the it's it's a bit fluid, but it's kind of our our picture at this point in time about where we're we're going to try and get to to try and address some of the issues.
Well, I'm pleased to see at least one point two is a good start. It's not the end all, but I think it's kind of a moving target. But it's nice to, it's very clear that what we have to do in order to meet these future requirements, so it's a good start.
Yeah, and it is, you know, as as you saw in the timeline, it's not a complete picture yet either. We have all of our other assets that haven't really been brought into this this calculation yet. So, you know, buildings, equipment and stuff like that, you know, so that's going to move. It's going to, it's probably going to move significantly, you know. It really is just kind of a first draft, how do we start addressing the problem?
Yeah.
Counselor Shaba.
Okay, Yawar, you make it very clear. Because when I see this two one point two percent of cash-funded assets, I go, well, that's a that's a lot for taxpayers, but I just rephrasing it the way you do, making it very clear, because I will expect the other sources of funding to be factored into that. You know, however, the the question I have is that from a historical perspective, are we willing to, I didn't even ask of, well, what percentage do we usually take in from in-house and what percentage do we usually get from external sources? Just for just for my information, if you know.
Yeah, in the last couple of years. Probably three or four years, it's it's about one-third, one-third, one-third. You get one-third from federal government, one-third from the province, and we have to come up with about a third on the infrastructure, some of the structures. Get the odd project, you know, we have the parks project where it's hundred percent funded, nine percent on the airport. We have the odd ones that come in like that. But typically where the big dollars are, that one-third kind of formula seems to be where we are right now.
Counselor Owen.
Through Mr. Mayor, just just to clarify that point on the one point two percent increase, what so what we're projecting is that your OSIF grant is scheduled to increase from the current six hundred nine thousand to one point one million, so it's nearly doubling. And as well, your debt payments will be decreasing over that five-year period. So that's why that one point two percent seems quite low is because we're being quite optimistic with putting OSIF towards it and reducing debt. But if that wasn't the case, if we did not have an increase in OSIF, if we did not have changes in debt, then that would be about at a two point two percent instead of one point two percent. Just want to provide clarification.
Okay, that's that's good. OSIF, we never know what the province is going to do. Hopefully, they're they're going to increase, but it could decrease.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank our consultant for the report and our treasurer for doing a good job for us. I know it's a good report when I understand it because I'm not a number style. In a way, I was surprised to hear that in a number of areas of our deficit, we're about average. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Because if we were way worse, we could go to Queens Park and say, we're in the worst situation in the province, please help us. Now we can't do that. But on the other hand, it says that previous councils have managed pretty much the same way as it appears that, which makes me feel better about previous councils. I think we're at a crossroads here. I don't know any politician, and I I don't even like to call myself a politician, that wants to raise taxes. But the reality is, we have to. And the reality is, we have to raise user fees for water and sewer. Now, I feel sorry for our water bill collector, because that's a job my wife used to do. And every time the water bill, it's a lot people freak out, but they have to realize that we cannot use tax revenue, that that is a pay-for-service user fee. And when I hear we've got pipes in the ground that are eighty, eighty-five years old, we have a serious problem. And we saw that earlier this year with a valve malfunction. And I think we had somewhere between five and seven water main breaks. Because and 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 the pipes that broke were between eighty and eighty-five years old. No pipes might have been able to withstand a little more, might have had less. So whether people like it or not, the costs are going to have to go up. Hopefully, we can spread it out to make it so people can handle it. Because not everybody here works in the mine. There's a lot of people in this town that make less than sixty thousand dollars a year, and they they're grateful to get by, to pay their their bills. In fact, I would say the majority of the people in this town do not make big bucks. But on the other hand, we've got to provide that service. We may have to be creative. We may have to go to Queens Park with our hat in hand and our documents and say, look, we're in a really bad situation. Is there any way you can help us? So thanks again for the report. I'm actually pleased that the tax increases and the user fee increases weren't larger. So it's a good starting point, and I can't wait to get on to our buildings and vehicles.
Counselor Owens.
More of a comment and question. If user fees and taxes are going to have to go up, which I, there's no way around it. I think we also have to balance or make sure that the projects start happening, not just collecting the money and like, yeah, we've got money to reserve now. Like, I don't want the town to come and get more of my taxes just to sit on it. I can sit on my own money and do a lot more of my money than having the towns have in their coffers and contribute interest on it. So somewhere at these taxpayers, I think it was soft in the blow with, yeah, we're going to raise your water, but we're also going to fix this this year and have concrete projects start to show up or streets being fixed or sidewalks being leveled off and stuff like that. So I think it'd be a lot easier for us off in the blow.
Like, we can't wait five years to, no, to do.
I don't want to be driving on gravel every time I go home and yet still pay or pay more taxes and stuff like that.
Agreed.
Through Washington, to counsel, you raise a good point. We will be doing a five or ten-year plan that really outlines how we can expect this money from, sometimes, yes, it'll be replacement, however, sometimes it'll be maintenance or just repair. So we do recognize that, yes, we do have to replace the big items, but we also have to take care of the small ones at the same time. And also, we are going to be planning some engineering work now for next year.
Counselor White.
So in regards to that ten-year plan, we've seen real strides. Since we had the strat plan done, all of our reports to councils always go back to that strat plan to make sure that council and the public is aware that we're keeping on point. So my suggestion is that ten-year plan as well for capital investment, it always be referred to in the future in those reports to council so that we make sure that we're on the ball, just like we are with the strat plan. It's excellent.
Anything else, White?
Uh, no, I was, I'm glad the questions went to where they went because see in our conclusion in the very short memo we put there, it's a ten-year plan. And and Jim could speak more to how he's going to go about that. But it may not be a ten-year plan, but, you know, common sense says it could be a five-year plan with a five-year add-on and stuff like that. You know, the goal is we're we're working hard to identify things that need to be done, trying to prioritize them based on the risks of, you know, failure and 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 stuff like that. And so that's what we were trying to get to with the conclusion is, yeah, there's some stuff going on in the background. You know, with regards to what Jordan said about using this plan for service levels and stuff like that, we're 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 kind of turning the page on that a bit. We're trying to figure that out. Yeah, if you, anybody who's been watching the job boards and stuff like that, there's a ton of communities hiring asset management specialists, you know, and stuff like that. And we're not sure yet how to address it because there is a tremendous amount of work to maintain that database and to make it something that we can use as a tool to help us project the work that we need to do. And that's that was the other part that we really want to kind of emphasize, you know, in conclusion here.
Well, thank you for a very thorough report. Most of it's not too surprising for us. Appreciate a lot of effort went into it and and your recommendations. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor La Chava. We have resolved that report number twenty twenty-two, quote, zero zero five, entitled twenty twenty-two Asset Management Plan Update is to be received. The council hereby approve the town Kirkland Lake's twenty twenty-two Asset Management Plan Phase Two. And finally, that the updated plan be posted on the town's official website.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point, thank you, gentlemen. Item six point eight, Community Grants Program Request for Funding. Chamber of Commerce and Holy Name, James Parish, Wilfred House, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you for your worship. The Economic Development Committee recently had a meeting and two applications and their community grant program came forward. One was with the Chamber of Commerce in support of the annual Santa Claus parade, twenty-four hundred dollars. And the other was from the Holy Name of Jesus Parish. Request for a maximum of a thousand dollars in funding to offset costs withholding the ninetieth anniversary celebration. Committee discussed it, felt that both were beneficial to the municipality and fit with terms of the community grant and have put forward a recommendation that council approved these requests.
I may speak in support of the Holy Name requests. It's once in ninety years, it's a little bit, we've been offside of our current program, but under the circumstances and once in ninety years coming to a trough, that's, I think, a reasonable request under we have.
Will we need further comments or concerns?
Moved by Counselor Casey Owen, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. We have resolved that report number twenty twenty-two, G D V thirty-three, entitled Community Grants Program Request for Funding, Chamber of Commerce, Holy Name of Jesus Parish, be received. And the council approved a request from the Kirkland District Chamber of Commerce for a maximum of two thousand four hundred two dollars and eighty-five cents in funding to offset costs associated withholding the twenty twenty-two Santa Claus parade to be drawn from the community grant program. And finally, that council approved the request from the Holy Name of Jesus Parish, request for a maximum of one thousand dollars in funding to offset costs associated withholding the ninetieth anniversary celebration to be drawn from the community grant program.
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Will. Item six point nine, Chappaheuse Playground Location. Bonnie Sackberger, Director of Community Services. Welcome, Bonnie.
Thank you. Worship through to council. You'll probably recall back in February, Counselor Shaba did bring a notice of motion to council in regarding establishing a small playground in the Chappaheuse area. And resulting from that notice of motion, there there was a resolution that in the twenty twenty-two capital budget, that we include a community playground in Chappaheuse and that a suitable location be determined. We did put in the twenty twenty-two capital budget dollars for the creation of a small playground in Chappaheuse, which was subsequently passed to be funded through the levy. And consequently, we did work with the Department of Development Services to look at the the land in Chappaheuse area that the town owned that had potential for playground development. So you'll see in your package, the Department of Development Services was able to produce six different areas that had potential, so they did a great job of looking at some pros and some cons and identifying the area. Staff did do site visits to all of the areas. And after we visited the areas, we realized it was only one that we could do a playground this year. The rest of the areas would require quite a bit of additional work done. They may be low land, it could be swamp land, it could be very treed. Great areas for future development for something, but not for a playground if the intent was for this year. So the the one area that we are recommending and bringing forth to council, it's called the Chappaheuse Parquet. We have confirmed that the town does have full ownership of this area. It is the area that actually, one edge of it does bank onto Government Road, the highway. But we would be looking at probably closer to the Chappaheuse area. It's a fairly large area, doesn't look that big when you look on the picture, but it's a fairly large area. It's fairly close to the post office, so I think everybody knows what we're talking about. We do have a request in right now for locates because we have determined that there are some water lines in that area and perhaps some other areas. So what's when you're exactly what's under the surface, we could then determine where a playground could be located. So that's what we're bringing to you at this point. That is the proposed location, so certainly open to any questions.
Comments? Counselor Owens.
Yeah, I, that was the location I kind of eyed up. And after that meeting, I did take a drive and looked at it from the Chappaheuse end as opposed to the Government Road end. And and the space is actually a lot bigger than what it appears from Government Road. The other thing I go by today, and I noticed that there are, there is a fence of sorts, okay? I believe there's six by six post timbers, probably about two and a half, three feet high. I'm just thinking that perhaps there's a way that we could put screen across them. I'm just thinking in terms of kids kicking a ball around or whatever. It would be a minimum cost. It may not come up to playground standards or whatever, but it's there. And 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 I think it would provide a little additional safety. But, yeah, I'm very pleased that Lad brought this up and to see this project moving forward. Um, but uh, yeah, I'm very pleased that Lad brought this up and to see this project moving forward. And I and I do remember when I lived, when I first moved here, that there was playground equipment there at one time.
Yeah.
I thought I was crazy that, you know, I won't go there. But anyways, uh, I did confirm with some other old timers that had been around that at one time there was playground there. It was much closer to the highway, as I remember it. So, yeah, I think it's a great location. Thanks, Lloyd.
Any other comments or concerns?
Moved by Counselor La Chava, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. Be resolved at report number twenty-two, C S ten, entitled Chappaquas Playground Location be received. And finally, that council approved the installation of implementing and implementation of a small playground on a miniscule-owned portion of Chappaquas Parket as identified within the report.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point one zero, dedication of Kinross Park in memory of Bill Enoy. Update, Bonnie?
Thank you, Worship, through you to council. About three years ago, Introns CEO Ropos brought a report to council in response to being contacted by some citizens who were former Kirkland Lakers who wanted to start a fundraising campaign in order to save some funds for maintenance and upkeep of Kinross Park. So after this proposal came to council, there was a reserve fund set up. And there was some initial fundraising activities that were done prior to the um restrictions that the pandemic gave us. So there were some, there were some definite fundraising activities that were done. So this is a bit of a follow-up. So over the past winter, um, her name is Ms. Peggy Jansen. She has contacted me, and she is interested in having a dedication plaque be unveiled at Kinross Park um in in memory of former Mayor Bill Enoy. So she has been in touch with um some of Bill's colleagues, as well as Bill's son. They've kind of come up with what they'd like to see on this plaque and bringing it forward to council for two reasons. One, because permission must be obtained from council to spend dollars from the reserve fund on the plaque, as well as to let council know and the public know that this will be coming forth by the end of the month. So they are looking at June twenty-sixth, Ms. Jansen will be in town for other reasons to do an unveiling of the plaque at Kinross Park. And um it's 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 a metal plaque with raised lettering that will be put down low on a stone, probably. That's what they were looking at. So this is an update. Certainly open to any questions at any hour.
Counselor Owens?
Uh, White, sorry?
Uh, what is currently standing in that reserve fund, just under eight thousand dollars?
Counselor Owens? Yeah, Owen. Owen, sorry. Um, I reached out to Drew Enoy um because his father had made it very clear to me in a way that Bill Enoy could only do that he did not want his name on anything in Kirkland Lake. So I reached out to Drew because I wanted to make sure that he was on board with us, that we weren't doing something that the family did not want. And Drew is 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 on board. He said, yeah, I think Dad would be okay. It's just a little plaque. It's not a big deal. And Drew also informed me that he will be saying a few words at the dedication and that he's been working uh with the people behind this. So I feel that this is a really good situation. I mean, former Mayor Bill Enoy was uh you know, he was a a character, a very big part of of Kirkland Lake. And whether you agreed with him or not, he could not question his passion and love of this town. And uh, I I I'm not big on recognizing politicians as a rule, but I think in this case, especially considering all the work that he did in in minor sports and and more senior sports, um, he he's certainly well-deserving. And and Drew assures me that you know, his dad would be okay with this. So it's a good thing.
Yeah, it's still Kinross Park, but this dedication, similar to what we have at Civic, no? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm familiar with this. I I knew uh uh Bill Enoy. We had a lot of animated discussion. Many topics, we named it. I'm in full support of this and and I'm going to be voting for it. Uh, also, I'm not too sure to this, my uh number related to this, but it is, I don't really have a trail there dedicated to my old boss, uh, the leader of the Bologna. So that's still going to be somewhere there, and all of that's going to be.
I believe that is the street leading.
The street to. Into the, okay, yes.
That's where the the name places.
Yeah, the Bologna Trail leaded into Bill Enoy. That's 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 a perfect combination to me. Talking about that in general.
Any further comments?
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Patrick Adams. Be resolved at report number twenty-two, C S eleven, entitled dedication of Kinross Park in memory of Bill Enoy. Update be received. And finally, that council agreed to fund the plaque from the fundraised dollars in the Kinross Park Maintenance Reserve Fund in memory of Bill Enoy.
All in favor? Motion opposed? Motion carried? Consideration of notices and motions, not noted. Intervention and reading of consideration of bylaws.
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved with the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor, clerk, and sealed with corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty-two fifty-four being a bylaw to amend by law seventeen oh five, community standard bylaw.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Patrick Adams. Be resolved with the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor, clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty-two fifty-five being a bylaw to regulate swimming pools.
All in favor? Motion carried? Uh, questions from council to staff, not noted. Notices of motion? Not noted. Counselors' reports? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I uh, I had a very nice candidate this year, and I didn't have to leave Kirkland Lake to do it. It was so nice to be able to gather with people again. Um, albeit, my two and a half-year-old and five-year-old grandsons kept me up running. Um, but uh, we went to Tobern, they panned for gold. Uh, they went in the headframe and and while the headframe's not open a lot of times, uh, it's like a mini museum in there with Kirkland Lake art, mining artifacts. Uh, the art show was there, the car show was there, and people were just generally enjoying themselves. I didn't go to the breakfast downtown that was put on by uh
Rotary?
No, was it Rotary? Or was it by that business? Anyways, there was a free breakfast downtown. It was tempting, but I didn't have time, and it was very busy. That was in the Rotary Park. And I went to the museum, and that's where the grandchildren really had the best times, uh, during the scavenger hunt. I uh found myself, eventually found myself a comfy chair and let Grandma take over. But uh, yeah, all the events were well, well-attended. Um, it was, it was really nice to see people in Kirkland Lake getting out and and being like old Kirkland Lake prior to COVID. And you know what? This is a small town. It has a small-town flavor. If you want wanderland, move down south. If you want good friendly neighbors who know how to show kids how to have a good time and enjoy the small things in life, move to Kirkland Lake. Come on. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Uh, Counselor Chava?
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much. Um, uh, a few weeks ago, um, uh, one of the businesses uh in town had something not too pleasant written on their windows. Uh, I'm not going to go into what was written. That's some of you guys on social media probably see that. I'm not going to go into that. I'm not uh, spend any time uh to lay it out. But I want to say that this is not who we are as a community to the new people coming. This is not us. Uh, it's not a reflection of our community. Welcome new people uh to our community with open arms. And now we're all uh one unit in this community. So I'm, I I'd like to uh say a big thank you to Derek Newton uh for going there and essentially do what any Kirkland Lakeer would do uh to right any wrongs. Thank you.
Most done, Counselor. Counselor White?
So yes, um, to add to Counselor Chava's report, I went down to see him um because I was so moved not by a council member or any other political thing, but I was born and raised in Kirkland Lake. And we were built quite literally on the backs of immigrants. Um, and not only did Derek Newton show up, but there was several. He let me know um a lady named Samantha Langwell went down, a lady named Mandy Black went down as well. Um, apparently, the outpouring of people that showed up that day was incredible. So I hope we're known for that, rather than an isolated, just deplorable incident. And so thank you for speaking on that.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Owens? More on a positive note, I happen to be driving back into town today. And I don't, and I don't know if it's because of conversation that happened at council with Michelle Ribery, one of our uh former directors of physical services, but now we've got two of the three Kirkland Lake signs that reflect the same population. It's not quite accurate, but it's what those people actually are. So now, instead of being thirteen, ten, and eight thousand, two signs show eight thousand. So I don't know if they based it on the recent census data, but we're getting closer to it. It's a brand spanking new shiny blue sign. So it was nice to see.
It's done. Any other comments? Motion?
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. Be resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried? We have motion to move into closed?
Nope, we have a time and a break.
Oh, sorry?
We're going to take a time and a break before we go into.
Oh, yes.
That's okay.
Take it for you.
So moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor La Chava. Be resolved that council adjourn in camera pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two of the municipal act two thousand and one is amended at six eleven P M for the following reasons. Item thirteen point one, being personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. At the end of position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Item thirteen point two, being a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. And item thirteen point three, being a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Go ahead, your worship, we're now live.
Okay, recommendation will be resolved that we convene, reconvene in open session.
Okay, moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Patrick Adams. Be resolved that council reconvene in open session at six thirty-one P M.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Okay, matters arising from closed session, worship. Did you want me to address them?
Yes.
Fourteen point one, naming of loose parts playground request moved uh by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Patrick Adams. Be resolved at report number um, sorry. Report number two thousand and twenty-two C A O zero zero three entitled, entitled naming of loose parts playground request be received. And finally, that council approved the naming of the proposed play space, the Ries Philion Loose Parts Playground.
Okay. All in favor? Motion carried?
Okay, item fourteen point two, request to purchase land on Madden Avenue, Bautera Street, Swastika. Um, moved by Counselor La Chava, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be resolved at report number twenty-two D E V twenty-nine. Uh, request to purchase land on Madden Avenue, Bautera Street, uh Swastika be received. And that council of the town of Kirkland Lake declared the following land surplus and no longer required by the town. M one five eight N D, East Part Lot one ninety-six, parcel one eight four seventeen. And then council approved the sale of land for East Part Lot one ninety-six, M one five eight N D to market in the amount of one thousand five hundred and forty dollars. And then council authorized the mayor municipal court to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, that council authorized the bylaw of the sale of the property be given three readings on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All in favor? Motion carried? Confirmation by law?
Moved by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor, clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty-two fifty-six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council held at its meeting on July twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
All in favor?
Moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. Be resolved at this regular meeting of council due now adjourn at six thirty-three P M.